Be in some sickness and trouble if my wife can't watch.
Time to be, you ready?
No.
Well, chief, you ready?
Chief, I'm ready, you start.
Josh Quall, you ready? Called me in order with roll call. Here.
Hi. Schultz.
Here.
Here.
Kenny.
Here.
Here.
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the three public which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I just want to look to the head to gun. The council receives information on non-adjudant topics brought before the council members of the public. The council will not discuss these topics and will not take action on any of them at this meeting. Anyone who's on agenda wishes to be heard. We'll vote a consent agenda. One motion approves all consent items. Number one is improvements for the meeting held on October ninth, twenty twenty-three. Number two, approved deny renewal alcohol beverage license application. Agent change, SSS Wisconsin LLC, DBA squirrel service station seven zero eight at three oh six East Main Street. Number three, appointment of Scott Larson to the police and fire commission. Number four, appoint to the public works committee. Number five, appoint Todd Polk to the community development authority. Number six, appoint Jerry Zalky to the zoning board of appeals. Number seven, appoint Bernard Gennander to the airport commission. Number eight, appoint Eric Schultz to the room task mission hotel representative for Holiday Inn Express. And number nine, appoint Arthur Bezek to the zoning board of appeals. Questions on the consent? For those may be curious, the asterisks are the ones that are not within city limits, but live within the district and most of them reached off the team that were previously on those commissions or committees wanting back on.
Move to approve.
Motion by Gargano.
Second.
Seconded by Peterson. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Propose.
Motion carries. Those of you guys who are watching and everyone, thank you for getting back on. General business, second, second public hearing on CDBG project updates in the area of East Main Street, Highway twenty-three thirty-three involve course road. Who's going to take this? Mark or Scott or?
Mark will take.
Mark? How's Mark doing today?
I'm doing great. It's a Monday, it's sunny out. Well, I guess it's sunny, but setting sun is all good, so. All right. So this project, because there's a lot going on, is the one specifically involving the hotel project of by the golf course and then the intersection improvements to golf course road and highway thirty-three. And the goal here is to just go through and talk about the activities, understand what's left to do, and then give the public an opportunity to talk and, and whatnot related to the project specifically. So as of right now, if anybody heads out that way, you'll see that the streetlights are up, they're functioning, they're working. There's a few things that they have left to do out there, and that includes street signage on both areas thirty-three and on golf course road. They have striping left to do on the south side of the project area. One of the subcontractors to the project, K L Engineering, needs to meet with the city related to the camera positions that will be placed up there. And then the final landscaping work to kind of smooth everything out and make it look good in that area. Those are pretty much the areas left to be done on the project. And then, then we go through the closeout procedures once that's all done. And there's some requirements that the hotel has to have related to employment and the hiring provisions for that. But other than that, I mean, that's where the project sits at this time. And then anything related to housing, because with CDBG projects, there's always a focus on housing. Housing needs were identified in the application process when we had public hearing number one. And then in this case, there were no residences or businesses that were displaced by the project. So that checks that box as well. But hopefully here in the near future, this winter, we'll be doing housing study for the city as well to see where we're at and how we can move forward with that, so.
Any questions for Mark before we take a public hearing? Thanks for the update.
Good.
I'll take public hearing. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this matter? Anyone wishing to speak on this matter? I haven't got nothing.
All right.
Okay. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter? Final call. I will now close the public hearing. Do you take formal action on that or no? Just an update?
Just an update.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Mark.
Thanks, you bet.
Thanks, Scott. All right. Recommendations from boards, committees, and commissions. Number one from the plant commission is approved deny first reading instead of set up public hearing for November twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three for ordinance nineteen sixty-five dash twenty-three rezoning four twenty Plum Street for South School, parcel two seven six dash one six four zero dash two zero 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 from R three residential business applicant Dan DeBates. Brian, how you doing tonight?
Good, thank you, Mayor. So this was zone R three a few, a few years ago when Commonwealth was the applicant. I know that Dan is the owner of it and making a change to residential slash commercial prospects as well. So the plant commission agreed to approve or recommend this approval to three, which will allow small commercial uses and anything that would, if it's approved at any future decisions, we'll also have to go to plant commission as well. So they recommend E three zoning.
Questions for Brian before we set public hearing? Thanks, Brian. Discussion, I'll take a motion to set public hearing.
Move to get set public hearing.
Motion by Schultz.
Second.
Seconded by Caducent. Anything further? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll have that on November twenty-seventh. On number two from the plant commission, approved deny second reading and public hearing for ordinance nineteen sixty-four dash twenty-three, amending chapter six ninety, specifically six ninety dash twenty-eight point one, six ninety dash twenty-eight point four, as it relates to zero lot line, townhouses, bungalows, and accessory dwelling units, and six ninety point one zero six as it relates to existing non-conforming signs. Brian?
So this ordinance in zero lot line and townhouses, that's just removing the, not removing, getting rid of the conflict with the four year foot drainage rules, bungalow courts. We decided at plant commission have a smaller footprint, but we ended up on a five seventy-six square feet, which is twenty-four by twenty-four. Same, same with the signs with the, removing the conflict with the, with the legal non-conforming for building. They'll, they'll make it uniform with the signs. And then the last section there is a new section on accessory dwelling units. Again, use the same five to seven six for size, minimum size for those. I do want to point out that section ten, city attorney has a, has a, has a change for that because ADU is, or any building that has been allowed it be used as a tourist rooming house under state law. So maybe get rid of it where the city attorney has a suggestion.
Sure. Yeah, and I can explain that a little bit. So under state law, any short-term rental from more than six days, but less than thirty days, the city can't completely restrict that. However, they can regulate that. So my suggested change, so currently, the, the ordinance as written says that the accessory dwelling unit shall not be used as a tour room, tourist rooming house. So it's a complete restriction on use. I've suggested a change to kind of meet the intent of, of that language, that the AD, ADU shall not be used independently as a tourist room, rooming house from the principal dwelling. So if the principal dwelling itself is used as a tourist rooming house, the accessory could be used as well as one unit. However, it wouldn't allow, for example, someone to live in their house and then make an accessory dwelling unit and use that solely as, for example, like an Airbnb or something like that. So that's my suggested change to comply with state law.
The reason we had that in there originally is because the intent of the ordinance, they had more housing, which is needed right now. So not, not use it as a, then rent it out for a, you know, a tourist arena. So that was the intent of that section. So stays as housing.
Questions for Brian? All right, I'll take public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak for or against the adoption of ordinance nineteen sixty-four dash twenty-three? Anyone wishing to speak for or against the adoption of ordinance nineteen sixty-four dash twenty-three? Final call. Anyone wishing to speak for or against the adoption of ordinance nineteen sixty-four dash twenty-three? I will close the public hearing, take it back to council. Discussion.
Phil? So would we make a motion with Max's recommendation?
If that's what the council wants to accept, I would suggest making a motion with that suggested change. And then I read it verbatim of what I would suggest, and I'll just send that to.
Jacob.
Jacob and Tim to add that to the.
Language.
The language of the ordinance.
I guess hearing that, I guess I would make a motion to approve that with the additional language and suggestion by Max.
Motion by Peterson?
Second.
Seconded by Seagullson. Anything further? Roll call to everybody. You're.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Gargano.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Friends.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Caducent.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Number three from the plant commission is approved deny final plat with proposed cul-de-sac at My Home Estates, thirteen hundred block of Eighth Street, parcels two seven six dash two zero three one dash zero 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 zero, two seven six dash one three eight zero dash zero 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 zero, and two seven six dash one three eight zero dash four zero 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 zero. Applicant is third act development LLC. Brian?
This plat has been re-qualified by the plant commission now. Last one, they approved the recommendation of the cul-de-sac, therefore the plat is for the council now as a whole. And there are some larger lots, as you can see in the plat, but I think the future, according to your record, I think the future is possibly divide those up to the future with the townhomes and four places on it. So otherwise, plat is being recommended by the plant commission.
Questions for Brian? Thanks, Brian. Council discussion, comments, or I'll take the motion of ones in order.
Move to approve.
Motion by Gargano.
Second.
Seconded by Schultz. Anything further? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Number four from the plant commission approved deny plan development group for nine new townhomes slash row housing and one fourplex at South Doing and Plum Street, parcels two seven six dash one three one three dash two zero 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 zero, and two seven six dash one three one three dash three zero 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 zero. Applicant D two property construction LLC. Brian?
So the plant commission reviewed this, normally would stay with them, but there are three waivers that are, that are needed that don't meet the ordinance. The first one is the front setback of the townhomes, and the second is the back rear setback of the duplex, and then the third is the minimum width of the, or the width of the townhomes. All three of those do not meet the current zoning. So the plant commission approves it with, or recommends approval of the site plan as presented with those three waivers.
Questions for Brian? Thank you, Brian. Council discussion, comments, or I'll take a motion of ones in order.
This is maybe one of my favorite projects that have come before me in a long time. So I'm really excited to see this move forward. So with that, I'll make a motion.
Motion by Schultz.
Second.
Seconded by Caducent. Anything further? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. City administrator's report, update on fiscal year twenty twenty-four city budget. Tim?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so this has been a very unusual budget year, a little chaotic, a little challenging. But I do have a plan. I just, I need you guys to let me know that I'm going in the right direction for this plan. So our assessment to, to equalize ratio came at seventy-seven percent. So that's disappointingly low. So that creates a challenge for us right there. We are scheduled for a market adjustment in twenty twenty-four, but that's then, this is now. If you remember when Amanda was here talking about our audit, she explained to you the amount of money that we have in surplus, sixty-seven percent. So we normally like to do twenty-five to thirty percent. We know we're going to spend some of that down for the fieldhouse, and we have. We are currently sitting at Jacob fifty-seven percent. So we're not spending that down enough. So as strange as this may sound, I think we have too much money in our coffers right now. So we're going to need to do something. And what I'm suggesting we do, and in addition to that, we're just about to close on the created ten eleven, and ten eleven will pay us a half a million dollars for the land that they're purchasing from us to resell to the developer. So what I'm, I'm hoping that you'll allow us to do is take that five hundred thousand dollars that we're getting from ten eleven and reinvest that into our capital equipment and capital improvement plan. We have to buy a fire truck this year. That's part of our plan. There's other miscellaneous things that are kind of one-time purchases, and it would be nice that we'd be able to use that. If we did that, our mill rate would stay the same as it was last year. We could cover everything that we need to cover, and that includes four percent across the board for our employees, covering the twenty-three percent increase that we had in our health insurance, adding a police department officer and detective mid-year, and just generally fully funding all of our accounts if we did that. And the mill rate would remain at nine dollars and thirty-eight cents per thousand. So I guess I, I would like to have either your approval for that direction, because it's going to, it's going to make a difference as to what I present to you on Thursday night at five. So please be there Thursday night at five.
I was moving along last weekend. Tim says I have a plan, so of course I should have gone more often, listen. And definitely, I'm, I'm on board. I mean, it makes total sense to, this going to be used for capital equipment, which I think is a perfect match for that.
We did pass that resolution that said that that's what we would do with the surplus. The, the issue with having such a large surplus, and we ran across this as we're getting our, our bond rated by Moody's, is that when you, they don't care what you have in surplus, they don't care what percentage it is, as long as it doesn't move. Well, so if twenty-five percent is what we have in surplus, and we always have twenty-five percent, then they're happy with that, and they'll rate us high because of that. If we have sixty-seven percent in surplus, they're going to want us to remain at sixty-seven percent. So we told them what our plans were now. They're fine with that as far as rating, but if it goes any further, then they're just going to expect for us to have sixty-seven percent of our general budget in surplus from here on out, or they'll, they'll lower our bond rate.
And that's anomaly. It's not always going to be that.
No, it definitely will not be. So it's, so we're in a situation where I think we do need to spend some of that down. A lot of that money initially was donation money. It was just there for the fieldhouse purpose, but that, the fieldhouse is being paid off, and that's not dropping because of some financial things that we've done in the past, which are, they're great things. And this is a great problem to have. It's just a problem that I need direction from you guys to make sure you want to do this.
How often do we buy a truck?
I mean, once every ten, twelve, fifteen years, something like that.
It's been probably at least ten, twelve years.
Yeah.
I'm just curious, you know?
Yeah, and so I, what I would anticipate happening next year when we do this market adjustment, obviously, the, the goal is to have assessed and equalized be as similar as it can be. So that'll be the goal for next year, which will drive the mill rate down. So then, again, so that will be, out of the six budgets that we've done together, you've raised the mill rate one time. That's it.
Mm-hmm.
So that's why I thought it was important that we tried to maintain as much of a static mill rate as we possibly could, understanding that if it, if it went up this year, it would go down next year. And I don't think anyone likes to see those peaks and valleys. We like to see something more moderate.
Phil, what will the, excuse me, what will the percentage drop down to then if we use that out of our surplus?
We'll probably get it close into the forties.
Yeah.
But we'll have to keep working on it. There's stuff that we still need to do, obviously, with the fieldhouse and stuff, and there's, there's other, there's contingency built in there as well, but it'll get us into the forties.
How long of a window do we have from Moody's before they start looking at that number being they want it to stay there?
So I think we can, we can do two bond issues on this one rating that we're going to get right now. But anything beyond, I'd say, what, June, Jacob, we'd have to do another bond rating. So we have to do something fairly significant there.
Yeah. And that, that money that we purchased the property, that was CDBG closed money, wasn't it?
It was. It was defederalized money, so it really wasn't taxed.
It wasn't tax money to begin with, so we might, that's a good.
So we've, yeah, we, we benefited a lot from a lot of different things that are happening. I mean, we made expenditure restraint, so there's a hundred and ten thousand dollars. They increased shared revenue, there's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So there's a lot of things that are happening. That's why it's been kind of a, just a really strange, chaotic budget, and you'll see that on Thursday. It's all good. It's just, it was just a challenge.
Hey, a couple thoughts. I for one, wouldn't like to see our, that contingency drop too low. I understand that bond rating likes the twenty-five percent, but having gone through two nat- natural disasters, I like having a little extra in the Peggy Bank personally. I'm not opposed to what you're proposing, Tim. I actually think that's a real good idea. I think it's important that we try to, this year especially, keep the mill rate at or below where it was, because our residents are going to see an increase in fees starting the first of this next year because of sewer rates. No?
Not, not twenty-four, twenty-five.
Twenty-five. I'm sorry, I misspoke. So I guess it's not as imperative, but nevertheless, keeping that in mind, it's going to be a substantial hit to our citizens when that comes about and not adding, trying to add injury to insult, if you will. But I, I believe that idea is great, Tim. I like the idea of being liquid and still being in a good financial situation and as far as the ratings go.
And what's being used for is, like I said, and I'll say it again, that's ideal. I mean, you can get longevity out of that.
And just so you're aware, the twenty-five to thirty percent, that's, that's your policy. That's not the bond raider's policy at all. That's just, there's recommendations and stuff, but that's your policy, so.
That does fall under the recommendation.
Yeah.
Does it not?
Yeah.
And, yeah. Anything else?
You want like a?
I think this is good enough. I, I just, so I just wanted to make sure I'm headed in the right direction, because if I'm going someplace off, I need to change step before Thursday night.
Field brick wall coming.
Yeah, so you'll, you'll see this plan incorporated into the budget workshop on Thursday.
Thank you, Tim.
All right, thank you.
Got a plan. We've got to go with something, a hat or something. I got a plan.
Don't worry.
All right, commission, committee, board of staff reports, parks and rec.
We had a meeting last week, and we basically heard a presentation from the Legion about an improvement of the web park canon and stuff. And I think no, no action was taken. We gave them some suggestions to come back with a new schematic, and I think Neil, who was here, will be doing a new drawing for us to review. So.
Perfect.
Yeah, they want to, they want to spruce it up a little bit and.
I'm excited about that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So should be good.
Uh, R E D C, Public Works.
Excuse me, Public Works did not meet, but I would remind everybody, it's leaf season. City crews are all picking up leaves. Please do not put them in the street gutters, but on the tree banks, because it's also rainy and it fills the storm sewers. So please up on the tree banks and the city crews work diligently to pick them up.
Because they are falling now.
They are.
Uh, let's see, utility commission.
Utility met for their regular meeting on the sixteenth of October. Mary Bendel, customer service specialist, was recognized for twenty years of service. As a thank to our veterans, Reesburg Utilities partnering with Dolly Bean, Donny's Restaurant, Greenwood's Cafe, Jay's Pub, and the Reesburg Country Club to provide free meals to veterans on Veterans Day. The electric crew is installing new services to the Holiday Inn, Addison Machine, the South Albert Strip Mall, Field House, and the South County Highway Department, and will begin constructing our distribution system in the Retzloff Edition. Water main has been installed in Retzloff, and approximately two thousand feet of twelve-inch water main has been installed to feed the east business park. Harbor crews are working on projects in Baraboo, Lake Down, Hillport, Lone Rock, and Lime Ridge. And our light speed group will be offering a couple of new services, including high-def security cameras. Watch this space.
All right, plant commission. I'm going to, thank you for running the meeting that night.
You're welcome. Yeah, I think everything that we discussed that night is, was covered tonight, so.
Good work, thank you.
Worked okay.
Uh, let's see, the library board, while you're at it.
Library board met. We are still looking for a youth services librarian. We had some interviews, we had some good people, but nobody that we really felt was a good fit. So Jess McCarrelson is doing kind of hybrid situation right now. She's working a couple of days here as she's transitioning to moving to Minnesota. So we're still working through that. We had patrons, a couple of patrons who offered to donate large trees for the center of the library parking lot. And so we're working with Steve and to get the old ones, the dead ones removed. And then they want serious trees put in. They don't want five footers put in. So it's a very generous donation. And so we're moving forward with that, and we'll be planting those trees next spring. The Reesburg Library will also be participating in trunk of treat at the country club on October twenty-ninth. The other thing is, we did have an open house, which is very successful for the new library. And we are going to prep that, because we're going to have another celebration next year for a hundred and twenty-five years. And just a footnote on some of this, the Reesburg Library opened its doors in May of eighteen ninety-nine. And in a small town, you know how rumors get started, and I just wanted to quash a rumor that has been out there. When, when the library opened in eighteen ninety-nine, the first person to check out a book was not Tom Stevenson.
He was the third.
He was the, there were, there were two girls in line, and he, he let them first.
He got up late then.
Yeah. So, thank you for your continued support.
I'll follow up with that. Any other committee, commission, staff, or anything on your report? Officer of the mayor, just want to touch on Halloween, uh, next Tuesday, trick or treating hours are four to seven. Make sure you're watching out for all the ghouls and goblins who ultimately be stolen the ground by the, the way they're talking about the forecast. So, but yeah, trick or treating hours are four to seven on Tuesday. Tom Stevenson?
Nothing tonight, Charlie.
Can you return that book? Did you return that book? The fine would be pretty big by now.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Philip Peterson?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Missy Friends?
Nothing, thank you.
Adam Kenny?
Nothing tonight.
Max?
Nothing for me.
Jake from City Hall. Tim?
Budget Workshop, Thursday.
Thursday.
Five P M, usual day and time, but please be here.
Mike, Gargano?
You sure you wanted to ask me to talk again? Uh, the following is quoted verbatim from an email that came out in the past week from Caitlin Opertek, our Associate Director of the Reesburg Library, and I just think it's worth noting, it's, I, I feel it's very important. Anyway, this is, these are Caitlin's words, so. Recently, Reesburg, Reesburg's Reach Out and Read program was highlighted in the newsletter and blog post by the statewide Reach Out and Read organization. The Reesburg site is nearing a ten-year anniversary of encouraging early literacy in the community. Reach Out and Read is a nationwide program in which medical practitioners communicate to parents the importance of reading at routine pediatric checkups. Reesburg Public Library's youth services librarian chooses the books for the program to purchase with funds from the Reesburg Area Medical Center Foundation. Books are given at yearly checkup starting at six months and going through five years of age. Since implementing Reach Out and Read in twenty fourteen, Reesburg Area Medical Center has provided more than fifteen thousand books at pediatric checkups. Twenty-two alone had seventeen hundred books that was given out. The Reesburg Library is proud of our ongoing involvement with this, and hats off to the library, hats off to the Reesburg Area Medical Foundation for supporting this. It's a great program, it's a great thing for a small town.
Definitely is, most people don't even realize that. Jason Schulte?
In, in other Halloween news, Saturday is a big day too, with at least four youth things going on, one of them being the downtown Halloween walk, so, so last year, there's around four hundred kids that participated in this walk through downtown, collecting candy, so that'll be watched for them on Saturday. I know they have a nursing home and a country club and a church all involved that day too, with other activities, so Saturday will also be a big day to watch out for the ghosts and ghouls, yeah.
They should be able to get their, their sugar for the, for sure.
At least get them to Christmas.
Hey, Moon?
Nothing tonight, your honor.
All right, uh, with that, I will take the motion to return.
Motion to return?
Motion by Friends.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Kenny. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Everything, so motion carries. Thanks, everybody.